I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Noted attendance, five commissioners present, two absent.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on February 22nd.
So moved.
Okay, motions were made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, carries. Thank you. Next is opportunity for citizens to address the commission on items not printed on the agenda. Is there anyone that needs to discuss anything not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Move on to the first item, that's a public hearing on a conditional use permit and variances for Taco Bell, 140 East 78th Street. Staff?
Thank you. Border Foods has applied for a conditional use permit and variances to allow construction of a new Taco Bell restaurant at the former Burger King location along Interstate 494. This site is zoned mixed-use community which conditionally permits restaurants with drive-up service. The applicant has attempted to meet or improve the site in regard to all required standards, but has applied for variances and instances where the requirements cannot be met. In 2005, the city adopted an I-494 corridor master plan, which has since been incorporated into the city's comp plan. These plans stress a mix of uses, walkability, cohesive design, and active use. The subject site has significantly, is significantly constrained by size, location, and limited visibility. The applicant has proposed a plan that includes a new attractive building, significantly improved landscaping, improved parking, and enhanced walkability. It is the opinion of staff that the proposal meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. There are a number of different review criteria that apply to this. They're all attached to your staff report and a significant attachment at the back. So I'm just going to go over a few areas that we should note. Variances from the following requirements have been requested. Minimum building stories, minimum building coverage, maximum front and side setbacks, patron entrance locations, parking location, and drive-up lane location. And just going over a few code, one code requirement that was unclear. The code states that drive-up must be part of a multi-tenant mixed-use development. Freestanding buildings shall not have drive-up facilities unless they are designed to minimize impacts to the pedestrian environment and adequately address circulation issues and potential noise or light pollution. So there are really two ways to interpret this clause. It's staff's interpretation that this is intended to permit standalone buildings to have drive-throughs so long as they're designed to minimize the impacts listed. This could also, of course, be read that drive-ups must be, you know, the first sentence stands alone and the drive-up must be part of a multi-tenant mixed-use development. In either case, staff feels that, you know, on the one hand, the pedestrian, the impacts of the drive-through are mitigated. On the other hand, staff feels that there are circumstances here that would allow for a variance, and so we've addressed it on both fronts, and we will then go back and address the code itself and clean this up. So it is the opinion of staff that all requirements necessary to approve the requested variance or variances are met. The applicant is proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner. The applicant would be permitted by right to replace the existing building as it is under Minnesota's non-conforming laws. Instead, they have proposed a new building that will significantly improve the site and bring it closer to compliance with our current regulations. The particulars of this site make it nearly impossible to meet all current requirements. The minimum square footage of a building that would meet building coverage and story requirements on this site is over 16,000 square feet. The parking requirement for an office, which is our lowest parking ratio, would be 48 spaces for a building that size, and that is not feasible on this site. The intent of the mixed-use district requirements was to encourage the combination of smaller parcels. However, there's no possibility for combination with another site based on the location of the streets here. In regard to the site design standards, there is no way to simultaneously meet all the requirements. The applicant has worked with staff to identify the most critical for, from this district. That would be the placement of the building, landscaping, pedestrian connections, and architecture. This results in a drive-up service lane that is adjacent to 78th Street. The alternative would be to push the building back into the corner, however, that would create a site in which parking would be the most prevalent element. In regard to standalone buildings with drive-up service, as I discussed before, the existing use could be rebuilt as it is under laws governing non-conforming uses. Rather than do so, the applicant has proposed an improved site. Further, the code exempts sites under 2 acres from mixed-use requirements, and no negative impacts are anticipated. In terms of parking, code allows applicants to request a modification of minimum parking requirements by submitting a study of anticipated demand. Taco Bell has submitted a memo including their parking calculation, their internal parking calculation, which would require 36 stalls. That's based on the number of seats proposed plus five employees. The proposed number of stalls is 39. Staff, or I'm sorry, city code requirements would be for 43 spaces. So they're proposing four stalls less than code requirement. And based on the fact that Border Foods has significantly greater knowledge than staff of their parking demand and their customer needs, we're comfortable reducing by four stalls. In terms of usable outdoor open space, staff and the applicant are continuing to discuss the type of amenity that will be added to the area on the north side of the site. Possibilities include a picnic table, a bench, or some other item that will help to create a space that will be a benefit to their employees. In terms of critical issues, the redevelopment potential for this site is severely limited based on its size, its location, its visibility. The proposed plans significantly improve compliance with current regulations. And as I mentioned before, the property owner could continue to use or replace the existing building as it is. Instead, they've proposed what we consider an improvement. Notice of this hearing was sent to all properties within 350 feet. We did receive a letter from Menards, which we distributed to you last week and also in hard copy tonight, so you will hopefully have had time to review that. And that's staff's report. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Representatives, applicant representatives are also here tonight.
Okay, I just want to start it with one question before we open it up. I think one of the big things for me was the 78th Street. Can you give us right away an update on what MinDOT's plans are as far as 494 and what timeframe we're looking at as far as any change in that 78th Street?
Widening of 494 at this location is not included in the 20-year plan. So while we have talked to MinDOT, they have reviewed the plans, and they're aware of it, they want the applicant to be aware of it, which they are, they wrote, they wrote a response letter, which we've received, but there are no immediate plans to remove that frontage road. If they would remove it, there remains access on Second Avenue.
Okay, with that, this is a public hearing. This is an opportunity for, for you to address this. I guess first we should probably start with the representatives of Taco Bell if they wish to add anything at this point, and then questions from commission. Please state your name and all the essentials so we know where you are.
My name is Daniel Rosen. I'm a lawyer in Minneapolis, 300 First Avenue North, and I'm here for Border Foods, the applicant. Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, we have nothing to add to the rather complete report that's been provided to you by the city staff, other than to tell you that Border Foods has worked hard to cooperate with the city staff and come up with a plan that is, we think, a very substantial improvement for this property, bringing it from non-conforming use to much closer alignment with the intentions of the city code. I do have, we do have with us tonight Barbara Schneider, the vice president of real estate for Border Foods. Should any members of the commission have questions about any of the details, but unless you do, we would simply ask that the commission recommend the approval of the conditional use permit and the variances.
Okay, I'm just gonna, just a question for you. Have you had an opportunity to review the memo that Menards sent relative to the project?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have any comments relative to that? Any, any items that were addressed in there that you wish to strongly refute or tell us more about, I guess? Let's put it that way.
Mr. Chairman, I think that the, the letter goes into some detail with regard to several of the aesthetic elements of the, of the proposed project. We don't believe that any of them go to the question of whether or not our application ought to be approved. None of them affect the fact that this is a dramatic improvement of the property from the perspective, from the perspective of bringing it into closer alignment with the city code. We don't think that any of the concerns that have been raised undermine at all the recommendations of the staff that's been provided to the commission.
Are there any other questions at this point? Tom?
I just want to understand, the ownership of the property has changed since the last time this property was in question?
It has not. It has not, and a property owner representative, Mr. Nelson, is also here tonight.
Okay, I guess that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the commission on this matter?
Good evening and thank you. I'm sure some of you recognize me, hopefully with good thoughts. I know, I think the last time I was in front of the city council, I was quoted in the little paper as being visibly upset, so I'll try not to make that happen tonight. My name's Theronberg. I manage the real estate department at Menards. Tyler, who you may remember, and myself worked on the Menards redevelopment when that came through plan commission and city council. And I want to make a few comments. I will not be lengthy. You certainly have the letter that I wrote. First, I want to talk a little bit about this intersection of Nicollet and the freeway. Over the years, there's been some redevelopment there. The Menards store is redeveloped, and obviously that to what is our flagship store. The Chinese restaurant's not there anymore, and I think there are many that are, that are happy with that. You know, I ate at the little Mexican restaurant tonight. That's certainly an attractive building. The only thing left there is the gas station, and to some extent, you know, what I call the Burger King site. And my experience with the city of Richfield has been that you go above and beyond and you want the best, and you want the most attractive. And I don't think you're getting this, that from this Taco Bell. I think if you look in your packet, they have some color elevations, and it's a tan or brown Taco Bell, just like you see across this country everywhere. I think if you're going to approve this, you should ask them to go above and beyond as far as facade, just like Menards did, and just like we hope happens to the gas station one day. It's our flagship corner, flagship store, and we want it to look nice. And I wanted, you know, I'm a real estate guy, so a lot of the little details that, that he referenced, you know, that's what I like to do, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna reference a few, if you don't mind. The landscaping, you know, they've done a lot of landscaping in the northwest corner of this site. I think it would be better used if they brought some of that landscaping along the freeway. Just relocate it. It'll look better. I want to touch on a couple of other things. You know, certainly access, and I'm certain they're reaching out to MinDOT just like we did. When we went through the process, there was discussions with MinDOT about closing the frontage road access point to Nicollet. We certainly weren't in favor of it. It's certainly out there as a possibility, and they should be aware. When we worked through with the Dolphins, there's also a specific line where the taking would take place. And if they haven't checked where that, that property line would be, they should. I don't know if that lands right in the, in their building, or in the landscaping, or in the drive-through, but they should at least be aware that that's hanging out there. I want to talk about pedestrian upgrades, and I could be completely wrong on this one. Menards extended the sidewalk along the frontage road, and it dead-ends at what I call the Burger King site, the west side. I don't see an extension of that on their plans, and it may just be because my copy's too small. If it's not on there, it should be. They should also take into account, you know, you have the overpass, pedestrian overpass, and that should connect west to a sidewalk along Second Street. I'm certain whoever uses that pedestrian overpass is going to cut straight across the road, and we should count for that on the west side. A couple of other things that were important when we went through the process, where are the dumpsters? You know, again, I had a small plan, maybe you guys have the answer to that. Just a couple of things lastly. You know, I've gone around and around in my head if, if the dead end of this parking lot should be a concern. I can tell you that the Taco Bell in Eau Claire, you know, where our corporate headquarters are, is the same way. I want to make it, if we go and look at the Mexican restaurant on the other side of Nicollet, you know, it's tough to get in and out of, because there's one way in and out. That's what you're going to have for this Taco Bell. That's my, my best analogy. So you should look at creating another access point on the west. And I state in my letter, they're moving the access point on the frontage road closer to the intersection. Maybe MinDOT will approve that, maybe they won't, but probably not a good idea. So that's, that's the real estate guy. I mean, I want to talk kind of broad scope as I finish. It should be a nicer building. You know, it's been my experience in front of this commission with your city council and with staff, that you insist on the best and the best-looking, and this isn't it. Is it a more attractive building? I suppose. Not much of a standard there. Also in the, in the staff report, improved parking. I suppose it couldn't get much worse than what's there today. Significantly improved landscaping, obviously. Does that mean it's the best, and it's, and you guys can't or shouldn't ask for more? You should ask for more. Enhanced walkability, I guess. If adding the sidewalk along the frontage road makes enhanced walkability, then I suppose it is. You know, I'd be happy to answer any questions. You know, our interest here is, is at least in part that this is our flagship store, and we want this Taco Bell to be as nice as possible. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Tom?
If I could ask you a question? Okay. I mean, we have artist renderings here that are on paper. It certainly is different on paper than it is looking at it in, in reality. Just briefly, but elaborate for me a bit, why you really think this particular facade is, is not attractive and is not compatible with your brick building next door?
Sure. Thank you. Certainly nicer than what's there today, I would agree. The brown tan, from my perspective, from a consumer perspective, is the building that they've been building for 30 or 40 years. It's tan ephesus. There's absolutely no upgraded material in 75% of this building. You know, when I started coming to Richfield and working through this process for the Menards store, I always looked at the culvers on the south side of Nicollet. It's a very nice building. They took great care in making it nice. I think it's in Bloomington. They didn't get the standard culvers. You know, we have those in Eau Claire. That's not it. You know, I think they can do much better, and I think you should insist upon it.
What, what would you change?
I would change materials.
In what way?
Anything other than ephesus, whether, doesn't necessarily have to be brick. I'm sure there's other materials that would be an upgrade. And I would, if I was staff, or if I was reviewing the plan, I would ask them, show me some other ones that you've done. Let me see what, what you've done to upgrade in other communities.
And what color scheme would you use? Keep in mind that you're in a building here that's kind of brown and tan as well.
Yeah, and brown and tan's very popular, and I wouldn't, typically I would not have an issue with that color scheme. But I do believe, and I'm sure they're going to tell me if I'm wrong, that that's what a Taco Bell's looked like for 30 years, and you're getting their prototypical design. You didn't get that from us.
Okay.
Just a couple of comments. I see where the sidewalk actually looks like it's along Second, or 78th Street, so that's, that's true. Second comment is that I drove past there this evening again, just to kind of make sure I wasn't missing something. But I actually think that the colors that you've got probably are going to be very nice against the, the wooden background that you have on the Menards lumberyard, so I think it's, it's probably going to fit in very nicely and be, you know, be a very nice setting actually with those colors. Because you've got that green high wall back there that kind of portrays in back, and I think any shrubberies in that that go against it are going to help. And by the way, I think you guys have done a really nice job, so I'm not knocking that. But the, the other thing that I noticed too is that there's really no sidewalk on Second Avenue anyhow, because you don't have one on there either.
We don't.
Yes. So, so to add one probably is going to be kind of for not anyhow at that point. I mean, I think that, I agree with you that probably the 78th needs to come in there and should fit, but the other one isn't there either. So that's just my comments relative to some of the things that you had said.
Yeah, and I would agree generally with the sidewalk along Second, with the caveat that you have the pedestrian overpass, which we should make sure connects along the frontage road.
Other questions? Yep?
I'm moved here. I have to settle in on one of the Menards boys. Is there a, is there a?
Is there a thought to, to close off the frontage road to Nicollet? Did I hear you say that?
You did, and that was discussed when we went through the process with MinDOT.
Yeah.
That's certainly a possibility, you know, in the, in the future farther than 20-year plan.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, the Nicollet interchange would go away.
Oh, when the 494, but not, because there's a lot of businesses and, and apartments, and I mean, it would be, wouldn't be conducive to good traffic.
And Melissa can correct me when I'm wrong. If memory serves me, I think MinDOT almost put it out there to us saying, would you object? What do you think? Should we do it? And our obvious response was, you know, no.
Yeah. No, I just had never heard that, that that was a thought to close that over.
Yeah, and then I guess the, the other thing that the applicant should be aware is that taking will land near their building.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
We used to show that line on our plans.
Okay, other questions? Okay, seeing none. Tom, sorry?
Oh, you want to close the public hearing?
No, go ahead if you have another question.
It wouldn't necessarily be for you. It would be for you folks, please. Relative to pedestrian traffic, have you researched it? Do you expect from the neighborhood, which is further down apartments and so on, do you expect foot traffic to your restaurant, or is it going to be 99.9% motorized traffic?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my name is Barbara Schneider. I'm VP of Development for Border Foods. To specifically answer the question without giving away Taco Bell trade secrets, a large percentage of our business is drive-through, and it is a very disproportionate share. Should staff think that we need to make a sidewalk connection onto Second, we will certainly take a look at that and work with, work with staff on that. But, but clearly, most of our business is through the drive-through. I'd also just like to make a couple of comments about Menards and, and some of their observations. Just to be clear, our dumpsters, we do not have an exterior trash enclosure. The dumpster is included within the footprint of the building. It's a feature that staff complimented us on when we brought it to their attention, and I, I can't understand why there would be confusion about that, so I just want to clarify that, that the dumpsters are enclosed within the footprint of the building. We've, we've worked very hard with staff, and this is not the building that Taco Bell has been building for the last 30 years. In fact, it's a new image design that Taco Bell released just last October. And if you can remember, at 66th and Penn, we had a mission building, and that was the original Taco Bell building, and, and Taco Bell has gone through some evolutions of that, but, but clearly this design is, is new to the system and the first one for our franchise organization. We think the colors are terrific. Most of the cities that we've worked, worked in and, and enjoy the earth-tone colors. We've taken a landscape architect by the name of Patrick Sarver, and Patrick helped us design the landscape plan and gave it thought with, with colors and materials, plant life that we think are, are urban-friendly, if you will. And I'm proud of the work we've done. Staff has been incredibly gracious to us, and I respectfully ask for your approval of this project this evening.
Can I just ask questions to follow on? You mentioned the sidewalk. I do think it does have personally some value, even though it would only go the extent of your property, it would stop, but from a perspective of the cars coming in and out, at least it gives some, otherwise they're walking on the street on that Second Avenue no matter what.
Sure.
So I think it does have some merit to it, and I hope that you'll readdress that if this, you know, goes through. And then the second thing is, is that, what are your comments relative to the materials used on the building, and what have you seen relative to the other designs, obviously?
I have the architect here, if you'd like to hear from the architect. The ephesus is a, is a hard, hard surface ephesus. It is not insulated behind it. It is, it is hard. It is durable. I don't believe our materials are cheap. I'm actually kind of offended by that comment, and perhaps our architect would like, if you'd like to hear from him, I can give you expert opinion about what our materials are like.
Good evening. My name is Dean Mattson. I work with WCL Associates. We're an architectural office over in St. Louis Park. And as far as the materials go on the building, I don't know the exact percentages, but the major portion of the building is an ephesus. Ephesus typically is, is installed over foam, an insulated product that's maybe one inch, and then it's either built out to accommodate some bumps, if you will, in the building. This is a hard coat of ephesus, which, what that means is it's basically put on over a cement board. Another word for that is durac. Excuse me. So it doesn't have the, the give that ephesus typically has behind it. If it's, oh, hit by something, a rock or individuals, it's not given. It's, it's not. It's, uh, it's not taking that bump and transferring it into the foam and then, uh, deteriorating the ephesus. So it is a very, very durable, uh, watertight system. Our ephesus, uh, here in Minnesota has been through a number of changes. But primarily, it's been, uh, had a kind of a bad rap because of, uh, its install. And that's been pretty much taken out of code now. So, uh, we have that material, that's a major material on the building. We have a, um, uh, stone that's on the, on the building. I have a, a piece of it back over there, if you'd like to see that. That covers our towers. And, uh, the rest of the building then kind of has a metal, um, they call it a slat wall over, uh, the portion of it. And that you can see where the Taco Bell signage is on, uh, in your packet. The materials are definitely not cheap. They're very, very durable, much more durable than typical ephesus has been in the past. And, uh, I really think that's, that's about all the more I can give you. It's a wood stud building. So, you know, it's a typical, uh, as far as that goes. But its exterior finish is extremely durable. These buildings need to be that way. They need to be twenty, thirty years' worth of material so that we don't have to touch them. We don't have to repair them.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions?
Chair.
Uh, I did have a question for our applicant. And the question was, what, what are you doing to, um, satisfy the height requirement? Anything, I know you're asking for it to be one-story, but are we doing anything to make it look like we're, we're bigger?
I don't believe that was a request. Uh, we are close to what I would consider a two-story height, though we don't have windows and so forth in the, in that, that amount. Um, we're about twenty, uh, I'm not sure, we're over twenty feet in, twenty feet in height, about twenty-two, I think, to the top of those towers. So, um, if you, if you take a typical two-story building that would have a mezzanine in it, possibly without any, uh, windows in it, that would be in the neighborhood of eight with a foot worth of structure, maybe two-foot worth of structure, and then another eight and two. So you're sixteen, twenty-six somewhere in height. And this building's approximating a two-story height. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? Okay, oh, Melissa.
Chair, I, I just wanted to comment a little bit on the sidewalk issue, and also I can address your comment a little bit. Commissioner Schuler, when Menards was redeveloping, we had discussed sidewalk, uh, circling the entire site, coming along Second Avenue. It was our decision, um, at a staff level, and what we recommended to the planning commission and council, was that sidewalk not go along the west side of Second Avenue because of the freight traffic for Menards, the traffic to the Garden Center. Uh, we, we didn't think that was the best place for pedestrians to walk along Second Avenue. Our intent is that if and when any sort of redevelopment happens on the east side of the street, that the sidewalk would go along that side of the street. We thought it was more appropriate for pedestrians to be, um, passing. It was, it's also friendlier with the height of Menards and the large wall and the truck traffic. It's just not really a pleasant place for pedestrians to be. And, uh, we didn't, we didn't see the need to require it along that west side. And that's why we haven't asked Taco Bell to put it in on Second Avenue, because like, like you said, it would be a sidewalk to nowhere. Um, in terms of the height, city staff have not typically asked for pa- parapet walls and fake, um, false second stories and things like that. Our intent really is to get true second stories where they're possible. Um, and we've felt that resources can be, you know, architectural elements, we have certainly asked for on some of other buildings, architectural treatments at corners that can be higher, things like that. Things like you see up at, uh, Sixty-S sixth and Lyndale. But on a building that everybody knows is not going to have a, a second story, we typically have not asked you to add height just for height's sake. So we did not request it.
Okay, thanks for your clarification. Okay, anything else?
Further question on, uh, pedestrian traffic. Um, this goes to both groups, I guess. Um, how much foot traffic do you expect to come out of the Menards parking lot after somebody is at Menards and has spent gobs of money and they decide to go over and get Taco Bell? How much foot traffic do you expect, uh, to bleed off of the customers from Menards?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the question was specifically foot traffic?
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Somebody's gonna leave their car in Menards parking lot and walk into Taco Bell to grab lunch and then go back and get their car and go home?
I, I don't know. My expectation would be very little.
Commissioner Ruben, I, I just wanted to add, when we ask for the sidewalk extension, staff's, um, thoughts are that that is an ex- a very busy bus stop. And we would expect more, uh, foot traffic coming from that bus stop than necessarily between the two businesses. So that was why the sidewalk was, it was very important to staff.
Sure.
I would just add, you know, it wasn't in the question. You're certainly gonna get foot traffic between the two businesses.
And I would also agree that the sidewalk doesn't have to go all the way up Second. I think you should account for the overpass over the freeway.
Okay.
I do have a couple other comments.
Well, I, I do have one real quick comment. And it's unfortunate for both of you that probably one of the biggest detractors in the appearance at that corner happens to be, um, Minnaat's problem. And that really is a horribly unattractive exit, uh, off of four ninety-four. Um, and it detracts from the entire area. Uh, I really think that if we could in any way, uh, uh, pressure them a little bit to spruce up that, that exit, especially coming from the east, um, would, would go a long way to, uh, making that area more attractive.
Okay, anything else? Otherwi- otherwise, could we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, there's a second.
Chair, I, I think that, um, Mr. Berg indicated he had a few more comments before you, before you closed the public hearing.
Your chance.
I would agree with the, the freeway interchange as I, uh, came here today. I don't believe it's appropriate for me to ask questions, so I guess I got, I have to rely on you all. And I guess the biggest thing, I wanna make one comment and one question. This is a twenty or thirty-year or forty-year decision. And I would be interested to know if this is or is not, uh, whether it's a new prototype or not, a typical Taco Bell. Is it their prototype or is it not? If it is, you can ask for more and they will give it.
If I could, having, or being a resident from around Sixty-S sixth and Penn, um, this building looks nothing like the building that was there. Um, nothing, uh, completely different.
Um, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the building that we have designed here is not a prototypical Taco Bell. The typical, prototypical Taco Bell does not have trash enclosure within the footprint of the building. We design our buildings specifically for Minnesota, what we like to see in the communities. We're residents, we live here, we're members of the community, and our buildings are currently beyond what the standard of a Taco Bell prototypical restaurant is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I would look, ask for a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thanks, okay.
Um, well, again, just my comment. I drove by there tonight and, um, I took your little photo and kind of held it up there. And honestly, I think it's gonna look wonderful. And I don't think we're, I don't think this is, this is a great plan, as far as I'm concerned. I think it'll fit in very nicely, I think it'll look very nice. And, uh, from my perspective, I think you've done a nice job. So, um, understand the comments, but it looks good to me, so that's my comment. Um, others?
Ask a question, just, go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, I, I agree. I think, you know, one of the interesting things about us as a commission and, and the, the different things that we end up seeing, you know, in the case of Menards specifically, and I don't mean for Menards to think they're being picked on, but that was in the context of a planned unit development, where it was the assemblage of a number of different pieces of property in, in a very large building, um, where it was, where it was all these issues. And, and hopefully, Menards feels like, you know, we were working as a city with you so you could successfully put a business in there, uh, despite conflict with, uh, a neighboring parcel. Um, you know, and, and I think the same level of consideration applies here, um, where we're not in the context of a planned unit development. We're looking at a variance. You know, there, there are no other controlling design guidelines that would tend to push, uh, external appearance one way or the other. So I, I, I think it's a nice property. You know, I understand that there are life cycle differences in materials between brick versus panel construction, but, uh, on some level, i- it's, it's not a, a two-story, um, very large footprint building. And, and I guess I, I would sincerely hope for, you know, given that the adjacencies will persist, that none of the Menards comments are the result of prior, uh, bad feelings for the way that the original attempt to acquire that site went down. So I, I think it's a nice site, I think it's, um, a definite improvement.
Tom?
Um, Melissa, um, I was struck by the, uh, sort of irony that, uh, Menards replaced their building and they were allowed to as a non-conforming building according to Minnesota law, correct?
Actually, Menards expanded a non-conforming use.
Which they could do.
Which they could do, um, by our code.
Right.
Uh, statute would have allowed them to replace it, but not expand. Uh, right before Menards came in, you'll remember, we processed an ordinance amendment to allow for the expansion of non-conforming uses in this particular district.
And, and some of that is applied in this case as well with the Taco Bell, since they're going to, uh, be replacing a footprint, uh, on a non-conforming building?
It's actually a separate set of rules, because this is not an expansion. The actual footprint of the building will be smaller. So, um, initially, we thought that we would process them under the same administrative process as Menards, which be, would be expansion of a non-conforming use. And there was a lot more, um, wiggle room, I'll say, for staff. There was a, it was a lot, there was a lot more negotiation. As long as you were coming closer, the city could approve something like that. Um, because Burger King is not getting bigger, their footprint is not getting bigger, they actually have to apply for the variances and meet the variance criteria. Menards just had to get closer. They didn't actually have to go through the process of, um, is this reasonable? Is there something unique about this site? All those variance criteria that apply in this case.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanna say that I'm certainly supporting this. I think it's a, looks like a good addition. And I'd like to see businesses come into Ridgefield. And, uh, we missed our Taco Bell on Sixty-S sixth and Penn. Glad to see another one coming. Uh, I think it looks good. I'm happy to have it.
Good, Dennis?
Oh, I'm sure, uh, whatever goes in there will be very popular because you have such a good location there. I'm nervous about losing parking spots. One to three seems okay with me. Uh, when I get over three to four, uh, to six, I get nervous. So I'm nervous about the parking.
Okay, anything else?
So just to comment specifically on, uh, given that aesthetics aren't part of the test or requirements for variance, specifically with respect to the, the factors that are balanced for granting the variance, I think staff has done a, a, a great job balancing the objectives of, of various competing, uh, zoning requirements. So I think it's, uh, I believe the variance requirements are met.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move the, uh, staff's recommendation for the project.
A second.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, carries. Good luck and welcome. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Okay, on to new business. Uh, reschedule the regular May two thousand thirteen Planning Commission meeting from May twenty-seventh to May twenty-ninth. Staff?
Sure. As, um, as you all know, May twenty-seventh is the Memorial Day holiday, so we're looking to reschedule the May meeting. There is an agenda item, at least one, uh, most likely two. And so we do need to reschedule. We're proposing for May since, uh, May twenty-ninth, Wednesday, since Tuesday is the council meeting.
Would any of our actions for that meeting be required in advance of the Tuesday council meeting?
No, we typically schedule, uh, any, anything that has consideration before the planning commission is scheduled for two weeks later on the council agenda.
We need to make a motion on that, then?
You do.
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries, thank you.
We, we don't have to schedule a snow day just in case. Just in case.
Okay, on to a no-ole business, I don't think. Okay, moving on to Liaison Reports, Community Services Commission. Tom?
Uh, their discussion, uh, this last meeting had a lot to do with, uh, capital improvements and, uh, budgeting issues. Uh, and they're, like, for instance, uh, um, moving up, uh, certain actions in the, in the parks, uh, or replacing boardwalk at, um, uh, Wood Lake Nature Center, things like that. There was a bit of discussion too about, uh, the impending hockey team that will be coming into the ice arena. And, uh, improvements that will be, need to be made there and, uh, agreements with the team and so on. So that, that should actually, I think, be exciting for the city.
Okay, thank you. Uh, city council, Dennis?
Uh, sorry, no update.
No update. HRA, Josh isn't here. Uh, school board, not here.
Yes.
Uh, transportation committee?
No report.
No report, okay. Seeing that, uh, let's see, city planners report, anything?
I just have a couple of things to mention about the, um, the upcoming meetings. Right now, it's still tentative, but there is a special study session between the planning commission and city council scheduled for May twenty-eighth, Tuesday, May twenty-eighth. And that's to discuss, um, some, some impediments to business development, specifically small business development. We're going to talk about parking requirements and fire code, uh, sprinkler requirements. So, um, that meeting, that topic has been pushed a couple of times, but as of right now, it's scheduled for May twenty-eighth. Then on May twenty-ninth, um, just to, to tease you, uh, the applications that are proposed for that evening, um, are the Co-op that would be adjacent to Lyndale Garden Center and the Honda dealership. So some big applications potentially on that meeting agenda. So if you can try and look ahead on your calendars, that, that'll be, uh, not that they're not all important, but.
Good teasing, way to be.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Uh, okay, so next meeting is then, uh, at this point, May twenty-ninth. And is there anything else?
Yeah, I, I have, um, an observation. The base by Pizza Luce, uh, I was there, uh, Sunday. Parking is just getting to be, is, it's not getting to be. It is a huge problem there. There were people parking up and down the streets. The parking lot was totally full. Uh, people were using the post office parking lot. Um, clearly, there, there is a deficiency there, uh, on their heavy business days. And I think that we need to bear that issue in mind. As, uh, Mr. Stark said last time, we seem to be a victim of our own success on some of these things, but we have to really start being, uh, more deliberate, uh, especially when it comes to parking. There is not much of a remedy there. The, certainly Pizza Luce can invent more parking space for their patrons, unless they establish some sort of a, an agreement with the, um, nature center and have people walking or some of the other structures around. But, uh,
But, uh, Sunday it was particularly difficult. And even during the day, when I've been down around there, it's becoming very, very congested and traffic is becoming difficult to navigate around on, uh, Lakeshore. Uh, that, that is an issue.
One other question I have is, um, can you update us a bit on this housing, uh, visioning task force? What is going on there? What are the expectations? Uh, when does that expect to wrap up, uh, et cetera?
I, I can certainly provide you with an update over email. I, I haven't been attending the task force meetings and Director Stark wasn't able to come tonight. From what I hear, the meetings are going very well. They've had a number of guest speakers. The group seems to be very interested in coming up with a constructive, uh, policy for affordable housing in the community. I believe the, the task force is supposed to wrap up by early summer. So I, I think they're supposed to have recommendations by June, but I can, I can check in on that and report back.
Are those sessions recorded? Are they available on the website if so?
Yes, they are. They are recorded, um, and I believe they're available on the website. I'll double check that, but I know they're recorded.
Okay.
I, I can confirm that the, uh, the guest speaker presentations are on the website in video. I don't know about the interaction with the, uh, the task force itself, but the guest speakers are.
I missed one liaison report, and that was for the Chamber of Commerce. So, go ahead.
Absolutely. So the, uh, salute to Small Business, which is an annual event, uh, is happening this Wednesday. Last call went out from Angie, the, uh, chamber president, uh, today, but it's possible you could still obtain tickets if you wished, uh, and I encourage folks to check out the chamber website.
Thank you. That was very important. Sorry, I'm glad you reminded me. Thanks.
Reminder, comment?
What?
The planning for the second Open Streets at Penn Fest, which would be the sixth Penn Fest, but the second Open Streets at Penn Fest is underway. We would, of course, be looking for volunteers. They could call Ann Holfer at the, uh, rec, uh, uh, community center. But, uh, we're actively, uh, pursuing that particular event.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, uh, call for motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.